Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. This is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. Call the meeting order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you taken role?
I have taken role. Everybody is in attendance. Jerry Spencer is by Zoom, and you have a call.
Thank you. Board will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no questions, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, we do have Dr. Emily Miller online with us. Might recognize her. I think she's here for that fee waiver, maybe.
Yes, thank you.
She doesn't have to say a thing, but glad to have her.
So we have a first, I believe.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. The only item that I have scheduled to discuss this evening is discussion of the board. Obviously, with the acquisition of our 11 acres at Greenfield, it is appropriate for the city to commence planning for the development of a public pool facility on that site. We'd like to make a request that the Shops of Carney CID assume planning and design costs for this public facility in order for some preliminary drawings can be approved, and then also some cost estimates. Knowing the work should include public meetings, the process will take some time, and I'd like the board's support on authorizing city staff to go through a formal statement of qualifications process to select a professional planning, engineering, and architectural firm to assist the city with our continued plans of improvements for that facility. So I guess if I could just get a simple motion from the board authorizing staff to start the RFQ process so we can continue to move forward on this planning.
Make a motion to allow staff to proceed with the RFQ process for pool facility for the site, 11 acres in Greenfield.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, Board, for the support there, and we'll look forward to continuing working on that site. That concludes Mayor's remarks this evening. We will move on to the Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I am home because I have injured my right knee by disrupting the right quadricep, and that is a tendon that you need to have to be able to walk. And so I'm having emergency surgery tomorrow at North Kansas City Hospital so I can get to healing as quickly as possible. They say that I can recover fully, but it is a serious injury. And regret that this happens to be the first day of Sheila Ernst's work today, but we were able to talk, and she's done some things that needed to be done, and I will be in touch with her frequently, but I will be out of the office tomorrow. I will probably spend the night in hospital, and I will probably be at home for some time after that. It's a straight leg, kind of a brace that I am told that I can put full weight on. So I think I can come back pretty quick, but I'm just going to wait for the instruction on all that. And in the meantime, you know, it could be several weeks at home, I think, you know, is what I'm thinking. But I can work from home. And sorry about that. You guys know I like to walk, so it's a big setback for me. Mr. Mayor, Placklay Electric has advised that their installation of streetlights on the bridge for the antique street lighting is going to cost $16,500, and for the 55 streetlights on 19th Street and for the roundabouts and along 19th Street is $309,300 for black poles to match the signal light poles. And per our contract with the MoDOT, we pay 100% for the streetlights. Alderman Lehman had asked me, he said, well, will these be tall enough to carry the banners and the flags? And I can answer affirmatively in that. We haven't planned to put those fixtures on there, but certainly they're going to be tall enough to accommodate those without the issues that we have on our 14-foot-tall antique streetlights on 33.
How tall are these, Jim? The streetlights?
There's a picture of them. They are 45 feet tall.
My.
This is a separated roadway, and it wasn't practical from our engineer's standpoint or from Placklay Electric's to attempt to light these with 14-foot poles. This requires what they do in the city. And so I think we'll be proud of them. Like I say, they'll be black in color, so they'll have a unique look to them.
So we'll have the decorative poles on the interchange itself as plans and all of our artwork showed.
That is correct.
And then artwork never, to my understanding, never showed decorative poles on both sides of the interchange. So Jim, these are 45 foot tall, and it appears from the image that it shoots a light down.
Yes.
I think the poles look nice, but that open globe is just like light pollution. It doesn't, I think, effectively light as well as maybe...
That is true, Mayor. Also, Mr. Mayor, there's no board comment on that. We do have the pickleball court plans, and Eric Marshall offered to come to a board meeting and share those plans with you, and hopefully Ryan and Eric can show you the plans while Eric narrates.
Do you want me to come up here and say?
Have you got a buddy?
Thanks, Jim, and hope you get feeling better after your surgery tomorrow.
We're excited about the pickleball complex. As you all know, we came to a planning and zoning commission meeting with the first set of drawings, and then we went back to the park board after we got an updated set of drawings, as we had met with staff and Mayor and Jim and the pickleball group themselves about what actually they would like to see from the tweaks and things of that. We went back to Dan Miller and got a redraw, and we feel that this redraw will really benefit how the pickleball players like to have the layout. We think it will accommodate them not only for league play but for tournament play, which we hope to have many out there and bring extra new money into town. If we can go to, as Dave has pointed out, the original drawing did not have, quote, alleyways down the, basically on the thirds, and Dave is pointing that out. This will allow no traffic to be in a pickleball match that is ongoing. So each court will have its own gate that once a gate, a match is done, the new people can go in without interrupting play on a different court. That was one of the main things the pickleball group suggested to us. Right below, it wasn't on the plans, but even though the bathroom will be having a drinking fountain, we are going to have a drinking fountain right where it is being highlighted upon the screen. And Ryan is showing that, as well as Dave. This fountain is exactly really similar to the one we have at Lyons Park. It will still have the pet water. It will have the drinking fountain. It will have the bottle fill. And then in addition to this, so if we ever need to power wash the courts, it has a locking hose bib in it, and also for people, if they have a big cooler for tournaments, it's got a cooler fill. So it's a little different, but it's based on the same model, and we're excited that that'll be put down there, and they'll have a water line going from the bathroom down to that area. I'm sorry we don't have the lighting schematics that, yet. They are still working with Musco lighting on that. Really, nothing is going to change on that part except for the location because of the two alleyways. One thing that Jim and I, and then with the addition of Mayor Pogue and Ryan, we saw that the original skate park was only going to have a three-inch overlay on that and then a fence around it. And with what that ground is right now, we knew it started heating and cracking, and we felt like, we're going to do this, let's do this right. And so we are going to put the skate park will be in concrete. It'll be the post-tension concrete. And if by chance down the road we need to even have more pickleball courts and we decide to move the skate park, the base is going to be set, and it'll be a really heavy-duty base because our skate park equipment can set directly on that concrete, and we feel it's just going to be much better for those skateboard people that use our skate park, and we're not neglecting that area. And like I said, that area wasn't going to be disturbed. That is a really bad area due to cracking and things. And I appreciate Jim, when we visited with that, got with Dan Miller right away, and they gave us those cost estimate. We don't have the final breakdown yet on the total cost of the project, but he was thinking 80 to 90,000 to rip out that area and put the extra post-tension concrete in that area. Basically, Ryan, I think that's the only other thing that we added because of the extra alleyways in the pickleball court area was to the east of the courts, we are going to have to put a retaining wall in. And if it's anything like the retaining wall down at Lyons Park, it's going to get a lot of use of the people being able to sit there and watch the pickleball games. But basically, that helps with the erosion area and the drainage that will be coming around from that. If you have any questions right now, if not, I want Ryan, if you can, pull up from that email that you have on the LWCF drawings. We've been working, David and I, Ryan, Mayor and Jim, we've all been in contact with Rebecca down at Jeff City because of the taking of the land that is already in an LWCF location.
Explain that. Explain what that is.
Sure. It's our Land and Water Conservation Fund. It's managed by the federal people up in Omaha, but to get our funding, we go through the Jeff City people that approve the plans and so forth, and then they send those on. One thing we were really worried about was having to do a whole nother environmental study, and since it was already there, they said we didn't have to do that. It should save us a lot of money. We will be going to the school board as soon as we possibly can, once we get all this information. But 14.1 acres is the total area, I do believe, of the LWCF grant that was done, I do believe, in 1980, when they constructed the ball fields and the original tennis courts. And the city is going to be working with the school on the drainage area, and that will be part of the agreement to get the land for our pickleball courts. The city will be acquiring 4.16 acres, and originally, our trail was already deeded to us from the school, and the school will then assume 9.94 acres. So we'll have to send all this information with our plans. Rebecca didn't seem to think that it would be any problem now that we're getting this, and I know David has done a great job continuing to communicate with Rebecca down in Jeff City. So Ryan, do you have anything you want to add that I might have missed, or Jim?
Just to explain the 6F boundary and the commitment that's made when we accept grant funds for Land and Water Conservation Fund programs. It's a very stringent commitment. In perpetuity, we are dedicating that ground to outdoor recreational activities. And so when this is, that's about as the heaviest grant restriction I've ever seen. It's been litigated across the country, but you know, it is a string that you cannot get out of. So when we take that money, which we did take it for the amphitheater, and we have 19 acres in the amphitheater's 6F boundary, and we took money for the Lyons Splash Park and all of the outdoor land. We've excluded, of course, the firehouse building itself, but that ground is forever committed for outdoor activities. And that means if we want to build a community center that's indoor, we're going to have to substitute ground in place of that if that's the location we want to use. So it's something to remember when you hear about the Land and Water Conservation Program and think, well, that's a wonderful thing. Well, it's also a long-term commitment forever.
Are there any questions from the board on this update?
Folks, there is one thing I'd like to add. This is Ryan, by the way. Real quickly, I am going to go back. I did want to show you. So can you see my screen okay?
No.
Okay. So the restroom area in the redraw has actually been moved south. It was a little closer to the trail that goes along 19th Street, and there was going to be a little stub connection right off of the trail that runs parallel the 19th Street to the restroom. It has now been moved south about 20 feet or so, and the stub will actually be at the turn in the trail where the trail itself starts to go south. They'll still be able, the walkers will still be able to access the restroom. It just makes better sense from a water access perspective and sewer perspective, and you'll notice the kind of zigzag pattern here for the handicap accessible rampway, and that's necessitated because of the slope from the parking lot to the restroom area. That's really all I had to add. Eric did an excellent job.
Correct.
Thank you, guys. And I will tell you that we received our use tax allotment for the June collections today, and it rose from 37,000 last month to 48,000 this month, which gives us a great deal of comfort because that's the number, if it's on average, will get us to our 600,000 a year that we had projected. We've been told that it's slow coming in, so we're still crossing our fingers that we're going to see that number continue to rise. Also, Mr. Mayor, in the back of the agenda packet are a lot of detailed pictures on the roofing projects. Murphy's Law seemed to be working as the south end of the firehouse building was drenched with rainstorm during the re-roof process, and our city staff wet back the carpet and got things cleaned up. And Mayor Pogue actually discovered that the corrugated metal ceiling was holding even more water, and so those sections were removed, and we've detected some long-term damage. It's going to have to probably have some insulation replacement and a new ceiling in that south end of the building, which will be an unexpected cost, but we need to help the Carney Enrichment Council get that restored. Also, he'd like to replace the carpet. It's 12 years old. He's asking me if we can make claims on the roofing company. I've asked our consultant, Christian Oath, about that, and I haven't heard back, but we'll check into that. I can't contribute all these damages to that. We had, that metal roofing was concealing long-term leaking that sort of reappeared just here recently. So I'm not sure, and with a 12-year-old carpet, how much we would expect our roofing company to take on, but I think they're fair, so we'll see how that works out. So I am pleased with what Christian Oath is doing as a consultant for our roofing, and I wanted you to see those reports. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
We have no public requests or petitions this evening, no public hearings scheduled, no items to discuss under old business or new business. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Barker?
I have nothing this evening.
Alderman Lehman?
Just like to say that the fireworks display was great. Drove by the park and saw the huge crowd out there and decided to go to another spot to watch it and was a little surprised as well as a lot of people where I was sitting that it would start going off a little bit sooner, but understood why, because of the impending rains. I thought it was a great, great show, and so kudos to everybody involved with that. So that's all I have.
Alderman Holt?
I'm coming with David. I thought that having the great crowds, and I thought traffic was going well, and Eric said that traffic got out extremely well. Our police officers did a good job. I, too, was in a different location because I got roped into working for the church. But getting out, people were very, when you think of how many people leave the park, you think everybody's in a big hurry, but we had folks parked over at the Assembly God Church. We had people parked over at the Catholic Church, and people were letting people out. I mean, they were being very, very nice. They were stopping letting people out. I thought, wow, how cool it was that we had a community that's, you know, nice and generous like that. It was really good. And then when you got downtown here, the police were getting traffic through, and it just all flowed and went well. I didn't hear of any incidents. This weekend, now I haven't talked with the police officers, but I hadn't heard of anybody getting hurt in county, and that's always a good thing. I always worry about with fireworks, if somebody getting hurt or, you know, something catching fire, and I hadn't heard of anything. So I'd say it didn't happen, but I didn't hear of any. So I thought we had a successful Fourth of July weekend.
I believe the only incident we had is we had a dumpster fire from somebody put some spent fireworks that weren't completely extinguished into a commercial dumpster in the shops. Pretty large dumpster fire last night, about 11:15-ish, but I think that's about it.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. Dr. Emily Miller was with us, and I wanted to appreciate and thank her for joining us so she could see that pickleball presentation. We're going to come see you, Dr. Miller.
Alderman Spencer, do you have anything for Alderman discussion?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Do you have a noticed-up executive session for this evening? So we do have a closed session to discuss real estate matters per RSMO 610021 subsection 2, leasing, purchase or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration. So we can consider a motion to enter into executive session at 6:55.
I'll make that motion to enter into executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the board. Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
It's unanimous. After we adjourn our executive session, we'll return back here to the public session to conclude our meeting. Sheila, you're welcome to join us. You're welcome to join us, too, Pavich, if you'd like to.
You can join us, too.
All right.
Kathy, what are you doing?
You know?
You know?